Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, first order of business is six two two Route three oh three resubdivision plan, DB twenty-three dash forty-seven.
Can you just sign in and tell everyone your name?
Good evening Chairman, members of the board, town council staff, Lino Scheretta, all offices of Lakewood, Flatland, Schmidt, One Blue Hill Plaza, Borkham, New York. And with me this evening, Justin Perry-Cohn out from Collier Engineering.
Justin, can you just call your last name for me?
Sure. F.B., double R, double C, hang up.
Thank you.
Just wanted to name this one. This one doesn't make it spell.
Yes, sir, what will you do for the subdivision?
Yes, we got a couple of things going on, Mr. Chairman. So, this application, just to give a little bit of background, was last before you, I want to say October, I wasn't part of the party yet, but now I'm involved in the application. It was last before you in October, they had some work to do to be applicant, what they're proposing, this is on the old driving range of the FedEx, on three oh three, warehouse approximately one hundred sixty thousand square feet, one sixty, one hundred sixty thousand, one twenty to be exact, warehouse with an additional six thousand eight hundred eighty square feet of office space. That property is primarily in the LI zone, but there's a little piece of it in the LIO, that piece is not being developed. It's about eighteen point four nine acres of site, that's there, proposing kind of a dry warehouse distribution center, and that application, Justin, go through them a little bit, but it basically entails seventy-two parking spaces, thirty-three dots, and I believe thirty-seven trailers, trailer stores, is that correct, Justin?
Yeah.
With respect to the, the application itself in terms of bulk, the project will require variance particularly for height, because I guess the maximum based on the code is twenty-six feet, but I think we're asking for fifty point seven four, so that's going to be a variance. There's also a question about the hours of operation, have you made any variance for that, whether that's a use variance or an area variance, I've got the Thompson County, I'll have to sort that one out, so we'll adjust that. But the hours of operation, if they're looking to do a twenty-four hour facility, again, that's what they're proposing, that's something we're going to have to go to zoning board for. We did receive a lot of comments from various agencies, which we can go through tonight. We do understand we have to come back to you, because I know there are submissions that we're going to have to make in terms of new site plans, and what I want to have done tonight, just as a point of awareness, showing what we submitted, back, I guess, in this last before your board, and then, and we're going to be submitting, we have a rendering.
Can you just talk a little louder?
Yeah, because this, yeah, it's a bit loud.
Yeah, I'm, can you, can you just push the phone down a little bit too, away from his, his line?
Let this have you a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Lean up a little, listen to the chairman, that's perfect, thank you.
No problem. So, what I was saying is, so I'm going to have Justin go through the site plan, just to give you, get you acclimated.
We're dealing with subdivision right now.
Oh, okay, subdivision.
We're going to go back to the site plan.
Okay, so subdivision.
I'm going to keep, we're going to keep subdivision.
You got it, so subdivision is an easy one, I'll turn it over to Justin, Justin talk about subdivision, basically it's reverse subdivision, we're going to be merging parcels and disclaiming the lot lines, but I'll have Justin go through that, and then I'll get back to my site plan.
Start with easier, a little bit, so, as Lino said, this is just a lot merger.
Yes, keep a little louder for us.
Sorry, as Lino mentioned, this is a lot merger, just resolving this line in the middle, and by two lots.
We know this is going to be very easy, but I just want to keep subdivision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any questions from the board, Andy, have any questions, comments? Oh, no, I'm sorry. What are the consulting boards?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Project Review has no additional comments. The Office of Building Zoning and Planning, Jane Sladen, May twenty, she has one comment. The Office, Department of Environmental Management, Engineer, Town of Orange Town, June eleven, has three comments, and all the other comments have been added in prior.
Except AKRS, it's stapled to the back.
Excuse me?
AKRS comments are stapled to the back, from the memo.
That's probably what they're talking about.
It's more like that's how it is.
It's the same memo.
If it's site camera, remember the old, that right?
Got it, okay.
Okay, this is strictly subdivision, thank you. Okay, any questions, comments? So, on the subdivision, yeah, 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 the line that's gone through here, does it, it stops right at that one point where that property is?
Yeah, at the corner.
So, the property is going to be, what portion of the property, the southern part, right, not just subdivision or all of the?
No, no, the rest, not the rest.
Yeah, Justin, you just outlined.
Yeah.
Yeah, Justin, you got definitely talk louder.
So, you see the red pins here?
Yep.
Red pin here, then it travels along this line right here, and all the way around the board, back, back here, so these, these properties are separate, it's not part of the back, it's the two lots, six five one oh four, that's one, that's one three, that's a five one oh four, that's one, that's one point two.
Oh, wait, you have some more questions? You got, open the top, you got that, is that, is that piece on your property here? Is that the troops?
Bit of, bit of your stuff.
What is that, like a container or something?
Let's call that as a building on the survey, but I believe it's, it's containers for the landscape, that's okay.
That they're going to have to board?
I mean, they don't need to.
Yeah, we actually do, we have them in violation.
Oh, they don't need to, they don't need to ask a result of our development, we have, we have, this is all wetlands in here, so we're not, we're not, that's annoying.
All right. Yes, sir.
In fact, that, Lino, you might want to bring that up with your client, because that deed case of property, yeah, did a lot of stuff without permits.
Are they presently right now in justice court?
They will be, I don't think they were heard on Tuesday, but.
That was their Tuesday, I didn't recall.
Yeah, I don't think they were, I mean, it's probably the next one.
Okay.
But, yeah, they're encroaching into the wetlands, so I would recommend that your client have them remove anything that's.
Tell them.
Yeah.
And it looks like, is that their fence back there, or whose fence is that?
It appears so, yeah, there's, there's two fences, there's one, one up here, there's one up here, and then there's another one, and on our property.
For our defense.
I believe that, I believe that one.
That's a chain link fence, it says right there here.
This chain link fence, but there's one up here as well.
Yeah, that's one I would, that's a press.
I believe that, I believe that's theirs.
Well, whose chain link fence is the other, who's the other?
That's on our property, so I'm going to say, well.
Looks like those are the wetlands also.
Yeah, it's, it's pre-existing, correct.
Do they have to be removed?
Fence I'm not sure about, I'd have to check with that code enforcement.
Okay. Just for clarity, the violations for the, the building or whatever the structure is in that fence at this point.
If the fence does need to be removed, well.
Lino, you can check with Mike Anderson.
Yep.
Okay, he's assigned to it.
Oh, he is, okay.
I know. Just, just the point, that's it, that's all that. No questions, if those other houses are, come on virtual, they're, they're, there's no access, thank you. Mike, anything? Uh, this resubdivision, does this now put you in the neighborhood of the land?
It, it's already in the.
It's already, because of the, because of the virtual driving in there, our, so the whole property is now in the neighborhood of the land? That's all that. Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Motion open after the public.
Motion open after the public. All favor, aye, opposed, none opposed, anybody for the public who's speaking on the, uh, six twenty-two Route three oh three resubdivision plan? This is only on resubdivision, it's not on a site project. We're doing this separately, so this is strictly a resubdivision, that's why we wanted to say that.
Which, to clarify, is a lot merger, they're merging two existing lots.
That's all we're doing right now. Okay, motion to, both of those public's calling out? Thank you. All favor, aye, opposed, none opposed, um, okay, I'm motion resubfinalizing this to the board, I still think you can say a lot of questions. There's comment, the, the, should be assigned to the site plans.
Yeah.
We never received, we only received eleven by seventeen.
So, we have, we have a record of sending it, but if.
We don't have, we don't have.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, Bruce made the comment as well, so.
How many copies?
You can confirm with the office in the morning?
Okay, can we condition that, no one just receiving that, as, in respect to the subdivision itself, as opposed to that?
Well, what you can do is just continue that, till you get the site plan, even full, full size, and then pick up the next meeting.
Right.
That's the easiest way.
Yeah, the code, the code is clear, it has to be.
Just to scale, so if you decide those two conditions, you can come right back. Make a motion to the division, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, we, we have, okay, motion, uh, resub, motion to the agency? Okay, Andy, all favor, aye, opposed, none opposed, motion to a neck debt, issue made now? No, I'm sorry, do I have a motion for a neck debt?
Just a question, is it, just go ahead, is it a merger or subdivision type two, if I'm not mistaken, not going to be subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's a type, it's a type two action, so technically I don't need a neck debt on, on the subdivision itself, the site plan different issue, because it's accepted through secret, so it will be a type two action, just confirm that, that's all.
So, we still prepare ourselves to be there, if you're there, so, uh, do you want to ask for continuation, if that's which you want?
Yeah, exactly, we'll ask for continuation if we can get on, just, on the, on the subdivision alone, subject to receipt of the plan's full size, signed, block, if you can put at least a subdivision on for the next meeting, because it should be just administrative with that, at that point, if we give you the subdivision.
The chairman. Well, if you're doing a county house, it's a thing we had to do, because just to, to re-approve, if, if the, Jane says they're okay and everything's fine, and the other conditions are met, roof peaches, that is, there's no problem.
Yeah, but the resubdivision, I don't see an issue.
Correct, for the resubdivision.
Yeah, that's, I'm just asking for resubdivision, not, not the site plan.
Strictly resubdivision.
That's fine, so if we can just do that, if, if, if college can get that to you in time, and whatever the date is, Jane, that we need to get to you by, then we can make the next plan for meeting, that would be great, if we could do that.
Probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Because we have, we have PRC today. Okay, so the packages are being made.
Whatever meeting they get in, they get in, so as soon as one, as soon as you finish your work done.
Resub, resub first thing in the morning.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You mentioned two conditions, what's the second?
Roof peaches, Jane Sladen has one condition.
Which is, which is the.
Which is the full size. Roof peaches has a total of forty, so satisfied, hopes.
Yes, separately, with subdivision drawn, shall be submitted, this is dated June eleven, ownership exceeds bounds, all these statements shall be labeled, and the iron pins shall be drawn and labeled on the corner of the lot. Those conditions, obviously, we'll get that in and hopefully get on the next event.
Meeting, you know, whenever you can.
But, thank you.
Right, and, you know, we still have three meetings, and we, and two in July, just in case you.
At least you guys do, there's other places that, not so much.
Just in case you, if you can't do it tomorrow, you can put it on the one in July.
That's, that's good, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is six twenty-two Route three oh three site plan, DB twenty-three dash thirty five, thirty-four, sorry.
So, on that, yeah, Lino Scheretta, on that, I started talking about earlier, I guess I start with the site plan, but again, just to, what I was saying earlier, you will ask your back in October, are we going to be submitting new site plans for your board for your consideration, but what I want Justin to do tonight, just to get you up to speed, it's been a while, just have him go through the site plan that you have in front of you, and then end with what we're going to be submitting to you, just to get a preview of it, I understand you don't have in your package, but I want you to see the rendering tonight, because I think it looks really nice, and I want you to see it before it goes in your package for the meeting, so, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Justin, we go through the site plan, kind of take you from where we started, some of the changes that we'll be making, and then show you the rendering, what it's going to look like with your next submission. Sure.
Okay.
I probably won't.
Okay, so, as Lino mentioned, this is, this is the, the package I was sent.
Oh, a little closer.
As Lino mentioned, this is the package I was sent in March, so this, this hasn't been updated yet to address a lot of the comments we've received, but just to walk you through it, it is one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty square foot warehouse portion, plus.
Or, or even on the other side, it's easier, yeah, thank you, this way everyone's.
I thought you could make it to the end behind it, we know.
We're going to be having to turn my results over pretty soon, and I'd like to buy a valve after that.
This is actually better, this is better because I'm going to be talking, zoning, the zoning table over here, so, there's also six hundred, six thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of office space, so, in total, the building is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet, okay, we do comply with all the zoning, as Lino mentioned, with the exception of the height, the height requirement being determined by the front yard setback, so, due to the site's, you know, shape along the wetlands, we are kind of, in note, we don't really have much choice but to move it closer to the road, that is driving down the allowable height to twenty-six feet, so I believe when we started the project, the height was fifty-five feet, feet, that's what we typically start with for, for spec warehouse, I think since that time and back and forth with the board, we've lowered it five more feet, so we're now at the absolute minimum we need to get the interior clear exit height, and, and the total overall height, based on the town's average grade measurement is fifty point seven four feet, that specific decimal point is a conversion of feet inches from the architectural plans, we have submitted, I know there was some comments in the letters about submitting architectural plans, we have submitted all architectural plans, a few shed renderings, previously, we had a representative from the architecture firm go through it, so, again, if that has gotten lost in the, in the time over time, we're fine, we submit that as part of our next package, the biggest concern, the biggest concerns with, the biggest concerns with this layout was the fire safety, so prior to this, the fire chief or fire official wasn't, wasn't, wasn't in agreeance on the approach, it was to have the largest facade, the highest percentage available for fire apparatus, so what we, what we came back with was extending this road and widening it to comply with the New York State Fire Code, now I know since, since then, we've gotten some additional fire comments that are significant, and that's, I'll get into that in a minute with the rendering, the two biggest concerns were the town's board new fire truck, that is now three feet larger than the one that we were modeling, no one liked the idea of having to pass the project to come around, they wanted, they wanted initial access on this side as well as the side, in case they, in case they show up and the fire's over here, they don't want to have to circulate, and they also didn't like the idea of coming to a dead end, having to back out, right, so those were, those were the, I'll say, the biggest ongoing concerns, you know, fire safety wise.
Well, and to add that, the other concern is typically multiple engines responding.
Yep.
Most of the department's down, going to automatic mutual aid, when a, when a call goes in, for stamping reasons, so, you have one truck pulling in one side, you don't, they don't want to stack behind each other, they don't want to be able to have other access, so that was also the reason for both of the accidents.
Yep, absolutely, and then, and then just the, you know, just to, to design the plan, there's loading, twenty-two loading spaces to the, to the rear, a left side for a total of thirty-three, we have trailer storage in the, in the back here, and then passenger parking for the office over here, initially, there was underground stormwater, and throughout the process, that's been requested all before above ground, so now we have above ground based in the surrounding project in multiple areas, another comment that you'll see addressed on the rendering is that we were leaving this area kind of as is as charactation, but there's the buffer requirements that needed to be enhanced and increased, I think that is a pretty, that tells the tale of where we're at.
Yeah, just one of the point two, so one of the things that we have to do, as also mentioned in Bruce's comments, we have to, on the chapter forty-one in the town code, we have to apply for a water diversion permit, so that's something you recommend that we do as soon as we obtain preliminary approval, we're going to have to go to the town board to get that after preliminary, and come back and find with that, the water course diversion permit in hand, so, what about that, exactly, where do we need to decorate?
Yes, that's probably easiest to show, I'll go to the green plan real quick.
I understand it's not your permit, but I want you to understand exactly where we're decorating it too.
We can, that's get that until the end.
Yes.
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 preliminary first, right.
Yeah, so, thank you for, thank you for my remote, yeah, so, so briefly, so, so, or in short, I think you saw on the subdivision plan, this is actually called out as well, you can see that, just the trench there, doesn't have a lot of water in it, but during heavy rains, it does, it does carry some water, so what we're doing is picking it up where exits the culvert into the road, we're here stepping in, and piping it back to its original location in the rear, now that's sized for the hundred year storm, so it's conservative, it's a large, forty inch pipe that we run underneath the site, but yeah, that's good, that's, that's something you need to know, the project.
That goes over the park, that's very, very good.
Yeah, goes in the grass here, and we're parking underneath the loading operation in the back, and then it exits, it exits out of a brick ramp pad, spill out into the lungs of the dogs, and that's, this is basically right now, the exact path, so we're just diverting, so it's not, you know, conflicting with the building foundation structure.
So, yeah.
And that's something, as we mentioned, that's something that once we get your preliminary approval, we have to go to the town.
Yeah, we have to get the town board, that's like, they have to get that. Can you show the, show the rendering, Lino?
Yeah.
And, and here, just, you guys, it's, 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 it's fully submitted to you for the next meeting, you can come back by the time you take the care.
So, so, this, this hasn't been submitted to you guys yet, but we felt, based on all the comments we received, the most constructive way to develop this was to show you our ideas on solutions, some things we're going to do next, so that we can get some potential input when we resubmit, so the, the biggest thing is we remodeled the new fire truck, right, make sure that works, but we're proposing to solve the, the issue without too much of a new, a new approach to design, is to install a easy roll, grassy paper entrance here, so it's a, it's a high density plastic honeycomb, it rolls out, it's H twenty loaded, and it's, you imagine a plastic honeycomb that grass goes through, and that will give the, that will give the fire department its own separate access to that apparatus room, so that eliminates the, the issue of trying to come in and make some of these odd turns, eliminates the dead end, and it allows them full, on the turn access, or fully around the building, we've also had someone out to the field to locate some trees, someone finally planted some trees on the property, those have been modeled, in addition, we're showing additional plantings to comply with the twenty-five foot dense vegetation buffer, and that will start that property line, continue all the way around, some of the other, you know, not, not big ticket items, but things worth noting, we added the traction closure for the, the office, so at least, at least there's trash, outside the building, being the compactor, they have a place to put that, we also put a potential generator pad, in the event that they want to do a backup generator, so that's sized for a thousand kilowatt unit.
Could you show me where the, the border road pipe is going on, roughly?
Come right around here, around there.
I don't know how far I was.
Yeah, and we've also been busy in anticipation of some of the other comments, so, some of the other things that we did, that again, we haven't received yet, but we will, we had a traffic report done, we found out since this application that FedEx has some improvements coming in, so we took, we opened up, not opened, sorry, parking spaces, not, I'm saying opened, just to be sure, it's still secret, we, we reviewed the documents at FedEx, we accounted for their increased parking and potential building expansion, we've updated our traffic memo to include that, we've also produced a air quality number index, and then last week, we were out to the site, and we took some sound measurements around some of the surrounding areas, just to show that we're, we're not increasing the sound levels beyond anything substantial now, I'm not going to speak to those, because I didn't kind of write the reports myself, but we will have our expert that prepared those at the, the next meeting, just, just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, the reports are made, and they're submitted, someone had mentioned residents, and even though these do look like residents, they're, they're not residents, they're all operating as businesses, so that's something important to know as well, and even in the AKR memo, it does state that the residents are over five hundred feet away, sound study's not necessary, but regardless, we took some readings, just to be conservative, make sure we have all of our, our docs in there on that.
Imagine like, like Justin said, you know, we're going to have a full team at the next meeting, but we wanted just to give you an idea of what we're doing, and also take any comments you had tonight that you want us to include in our next submission, any, any ideas for the site plan, and we'd love to hear any comments you have tonight, so that we can incorporate that in addition to what we're, we're preparing for the next meeting, or whenever we can get out.
Okay, excellent, let's go through the consulting boards. Project Review has no additional comments. I have a letter from the Department of Environmental Management, June ten, she has eleven comments. I have a letter from the Department of Environmental Management, June two first, roof peaches, we have a total of thirty-four comments. I have a letter from River Engineering, June ten, the applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significantly in that, in expected range game of the day, we therefore recommend that six twenty-two Route three oh three site plan be approved, made sub to no comments. Rock County Health, May seventeenth, which may have two comments. I have, World Power Punch, Town of Orange Town, May twenty-second, they have a total of seven comments. I have a letter from the Rock County Department of Planning, May twenty-third, they have thirty point one comments. I have a letter from Rock County Environmental Health, May seventeenth, two comments. I have a letter from the Town, Park Town Department Planning, May twenty-third, just a letter from them. I have a letter from New York State Parks Recreation and Snow Preservation, dated March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, I don't know if that was ever even, I'll prove that again, I have a letter from Viola Water, July tenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, and they have two comments. I have a report from AKRF, dated May first, which is basically a project description. I have two, one is May twenty-first, I have another one from AKRF, dated June seventh. I have a letter from Collier Engineering, March eleventh, for the site plan resubdivision, revisions, from Jane, to Jane Sladen. I have another letter from Collier Engineering for Design, dated. I have another letter from County Engineering for Design, dated, uh, August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, five, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Basically, I guess, the, the project. I have another letter from County Engineering, dated March eleventh, uh, from the Fire, from the Bureau of Fire Protection. Uh, I have a letter from the Rocket County Department of Health, dated, uh, June seventeenth, comments attached. I have a letter from Rocket County Highway Department, April twenty-fourth, no comments at this time. I have a letter dated June, uh, I'm sorry, um, from Rocket County Planning, comments attached. I have the four E A F, dated, uh, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And, that's an April story?
No, I believe that was it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Yes. So, you said it's gonna be a twenty-four seven operation?
Well, that's for, for two, that's the, yeah.
Well, yeah, I was, I mean, more than, is it gonna be Saturday and Sunday, or?
What was your name? I believe so.
I believe so.
So, seven twenty-four.
That's what we, that's what we.
You're gonna apply, no question, uh, let's see the angles. You say you want, you're not prepared for very exactly fifty feet.
Yeah, and you just told a lot of the.
You're gonna, you're gonna go for a variance at fifty feet?
Fifty point seven four.
I see, um, I mean, yeah, this one, yeah. Most warehouses today are about four, why do you think it's sort of ten plus feet?
That's what we, that's what we find, I'm sorry, that's what we find is the most, basically, most are going to have the necessary clear, clearance.
Yeah, we'll say, where else have they done, they're about fifty feet.
I can't remember, okay, the, the warehouse question.
Um, currently, currently, there are probably six other warehouses and they're all fifty-five feet, so.
So why do you need, what, what's gonna go inside at fifty feet?
I mean, it was.
It's a five story building.
Yeah, it's, it's clear, it's, there's no, there's no stories inside, it's all, um.
So why do you need?
Racking, it's, and that's what, that's just the, the baseline for the racking, the clearance, the mechanical, everything that goes in.
You got four plus, they go fifty feet high?
Uh, I, I can't speak to the inside, I'm an outside.
No, I.
But, uh, that's just, that's just like our baseline, so.
But yeah, okay, outside here, outside is gonna stick up like a school top. I can't imagine what you need fifty feet inside.
So the, so the, once again, so. It's better, it's better to talk about the architect rather than, so.
Yeah, Justin, please, just the mic.
So, the height of the exterior is driven by the requirements that, that the architect tells us and the standards that we have inside. The inside clearance height is thirty-six feet. And that results in fifty feet, eight inches and three quarters of an inch, fifty feet, eight and three quarters of an inch. Now, the actual, there's a, there's a note in there about the conflict of the E A F and the, um, and the plans. It's actually closer to forty-nine feet, but when you take in the town's average grade calculation, that's why you had that. It's very highly specific, fifty point two, four, point seven, four hundred. Yeah, again, it's, it is a variance, I, I, and we understand that.
Justin, can I ask a question, so you're telling me the clear height inside is thirty-six feet?
Thirty-six feet, yep.
But the building height is fifty?
Correct. Yes.
Fifty plus?
Fifty plus, so.
Forty-nine, fifty.
Well, let's round it up, we're using math, you're telling me that the roof structure is fourteen feet.
This is, this is, this is including the parapet, this is including the, the block and mechanical equipment on the top, this is the, the whole enchilada, everything added up is fifty point seven four. So there's other, there's other things I could want to screen. We could all the mechanical units on the top, we want that to be screened from public, we don't want that to be seen, so.
The parapet is gonna be ten feet?
No, that's included, well, yeah.
Included in the fifty by ten.
Between, between the building clear height?
The structure, yeah, the structure's probably six feet deep.
Between the building clear height and the top of parapet, it's twelve and a half feet. So that's where you get that, that difference.
Yeah, so the span on those, the, the roofs, at least six, six feet deep probably.
A lot of it's the paneling, the, this, this, the, the, the concrete panels that are purchased, the, the, a lot of this, that I wanna. Speak too much on architecture.
There are variants.
Yeah.
Yeah, the plan B, just in case.
So, like, my next question would be, Justin, does that architectural set include a cross section through the building?
This, this, uh, let's see if I can.
And, and if it does, it, please, um, submit one with the resubmission?
Yeah, so, let me, let me throw this up, let me throw, okay. This, this architectural set. This set, again, was previously submitted, has all four elevations. We've got some renderings showing, showing the color scheme, the color palette. Now you can see it's a, uh, modern, almost, almost resembles a high-tech facility.
So it has windows coming in, along the?
These are windows, those are windows?
Those are all windows.
Yep.
And what height do they set?
They look like they're right below the top of the building. So I'm gonna, again, say approximately thirty feet up.
So they're roughly twenty foot, those windows, roughly forty foot, not, uh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm approximating, I don't, I don't have the exact dimension of the windows. So I can tell you the top of the windows are set at the building clear height. So that thirty-six, that thirty-six foot dimension, that, that lines with the top of the windows. And then you have the parapet, that's your, your top.
Round and log, just to make it easier.
Yeah.
So we go from thirty foot up to fifty feet, so that should be roughly twenty foot.
We've got some color, some material, yeah, material boards, color counts.
There's, there's no section through the building, right?
Section.
They're all elevations, right?
Across section, or?
Yes, so, so this way you show the, the clear height inside.
No, but I mean, that's, that's all called down on, on these, they're not, I guess, I guess they're not through the middle.
I'm making a suggestion, since you're resubmitting. Yeah, so an architectural cross section, which will answer a lot of the, um, board's questions.
Okay.
So the clear height to the underside of the steel structure.
Mm-hmm.
And then the cross section, you know, through the roof, so when an architect shows cross section, it'll answer all the, the questions that the, the board is asking right now.
Yeah, we know that's on the, well, well, the architect, no, makes sense.
Maybe probably, he or she, has one in order to develop the elevations, just need to include that.
And there's, and then towards the, towards the back of the set, there's a few sheds, which I want to kind of let this all play, as your message from the, from the DABR product. So this is, this is taken, uh, again, on my plan, so I'll, I'll do my best to, to explain a little bit. So this is kind of taken at that middle dwelling slash business on the, on the back road here. And this is, this is the outline, to just give you the idea of where it's building is, 'cause you can't really make it out with the foliage of the house there. So this is from, this is a view from a street.
I just want to say, maybe you brought up that, that house is not a residential house?
I don't believe so. I believe all three of them are operating, yes, as businesses.
Is the veterinary, is the construction company?
There's a vet, I'm not sure what the, the owner is.
It might be one there, but I don't know if it's a vet, and then it's like across the way, it's canter, that's a facility, and then it's, and if it's like, uh, north or something like that, it's. It might be, it might be one resident there, and it's like every business.
Now, this is, this is, this is the view, I think, approach from three oh three. And again, not to, not to cry out, you know, this is, this is the problem you have to deal with, but it is a result of the wetlands. That's pushing the building to the front, that makes the barracks seem so dramatic. Uh, an example to give you ideas, if you're, if you're zoning for the FedEx messes, because of where they're set back, they're allowed to be set with five feet tall, right? So, they're not, but just because of that setback, that's what their allowance is, so.
Just a quick question, is the FedEx twenty-four, or no, is that a, yeah?
Is it?
Twenty-four seven?
Is the FedEx operated twenty-four seven?
I, I'm not sure.
We assumed it did, but we wanted to double check that.
Uh, it may be, but if you send an email requesting that information, we'll have to pull out.
I thought it was twenty-four two, but I just wanted.
Yeah, I'll have to pull out the approval.
Okay.
Did you say Cat one house, but you showed, I guess, that much?
Yeah, there, there might be one there.
It's like a, it's like a background pool in the back.
So, you're gonna operate twenty-four seven?
Hopefully.
How many trucks are gonna be coming in and out, one of those seven?
I, I, I don't want the traffic, and we'll speak to that when they come, uh, hide that for.
Ninety-one, they might.
That would be about one hundred ninety-seven, I assume, or the entire street.
Does it?
That would be, that's FedEx and us.
How many during the day and how many at night?
One what? He said one eighty-seven?
That's not for, that's, no, it's, that's.
That's, that's FedEx and us.
Total on the street, because FedEx is that next.
All now fox you are, yeah. That's, and that's also with FedEx's, um, what they're proposing in the future.
And that's over a twenty-four hour period?
Uh, that, that's the, that's the weekday P M, and two seventeen is the weekday P M.
So the, uh, the traffic study does not have the twenty-four hour number of trucks, but, um, the applicant's traffic engineer should take a look at that number.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, the applicant's, uh, the applicant's traffic engineer should take a look and provide that number.
Take a look at the.
Uh, the number of trucks over twenty-four hours.
Right. So that, that, in, in that report, that's the number of trucks in an eight hour, fifteen hour, hour day? Not in a twenty-four, whatever is not in a twenty-four hour day. So that's.
Seven seventy hours.
Peak hour, peak hours?
Yes, peak hour, yeah.
So it's like.
Week day.
Seven three, seven five, or something like that.
I don't wanna butcher.
No, I know.
Uh, so, speaking from a traffic perspective, I did not do the study, but their study has fourteen trucks during the weekday P M peak hour, which is one hour between the seven A M to nine A M period. Um, they have ten trucks during the weekday P M peak hour, which is the four P M to six P M period, and also within one hour.
And you're, over by the assessment form, uh, page number seven, Jay has ninety-one truck trips a day, in and out city trails. But, but that's not a twenty-four hour period.
For that, yeah.
That's during the.
Out, for that.
Well, this is, this is trips per day. And then, but the time is, that's, that's twelve A M, twelve P M.
That's twenty.
That's twenty-four seven.
That's twenty-four.
Okay, all right, maybe one trucks.
That's, that's.
Twelve A M, twelve A M, that's only.
It should be twelve A M, twelve A.
We got four trucks at one time, one at time, please?
There should be twelve A M to eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So that, uh, the number needs to be refined in both the traffic study as well as the E A F.
That's gonna be a lot of trucks. Just one other question, the pipe, that's gonna go under the.
Yes.
From the, that happens to be not just a little pump, that's a tributary off of the Atkins Act River.
I believe so.
That street.
Yeah.
That pipe, that's gonna bring it around the building, what's it made out of?
Uh, I believe, or, let's see, that's a good question.
I mean, it, it's gonna be underneath where the trucks are gonna be moving around and everything like that.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess R C P, concrete, but I'm a little shocked right now.
Concrete, probably four foot in diameter.
Maybe it's a four feet.
Yeah.
It did, yeah.
They, they do make four foot, uh, high density polyethylene.
I mean, that's gonna be, that's gonna be strong enough to hold the, the weight of the trucks moving in and out all day long.
I don't see it called down here, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say concrete.
The other concern I have is that you have only one entrance on the southwestern part.
One.
Those trucks coming in and out of there, or where's the other?
The truck, the trucks and the passengers are segregated, um, so that's, that's the passion that we try, we try to.
Right, so the passengers are gonna come in on the east side?
Correct.
And then all the trucks are gonna come in, there's gonna be more trucks than there are passengers, correct?
No, there's thirty-three loading spaces and there's.
But I mean, coming in and out of the building, coming in and out of this building, ninety-one trucks a day, that's eighteen wheelers coming in, one entrance.
Yeah, ninety, ninety passenger vehicles.
Right, but you only have one entrance for the trucks.
Correct, yeah. We, we do on the west, we do, we do the, we do our house with significantly more, more loading base than, than thirty-three. It's kept, it's intentionally kept up there, 'cause for, it's, it's safer to have the, the passengers entering the site and not intermingling.
Right.
We prefer to have the trucks come in, they have more than.
I understand, you have eighty-nine, you've got eighty-nine spaces for passengers, or parking spaces, right? You're gonna have eighty-nine, uh, automobiles coming in and out of there.
Yeah, um, it's, it's based on shifts, there's forty-five employees per shift, there's three shifts typically, so there's some overlap.
But I still, I still have a little bit of a problem with one entrance of trucks coming in and out on one side. And then you get, you get a back parking lot where I guess that's the loading area or something?
This?
Yeah.
This is trailer storage, so the, the trailers will just sit there.
So you're gonna have enough room back there to move, maneuver all these eighteen wheelers, seventy-five feet long?
But they often have a jockey that, that can move the trailers by depending on how many, how many trucks.
I don't have anything else, just like this.
So I just wanna clarify, it's, it's ninety-one trips, not trucks, right?
Trucks.
So it's forty-five trucks a day, or they go in, you have the trucks in and out, or is it ninety-one trucks? So there's, um, trips.
It says ninety-one trucks, uh, trips a day in and out.
Trips, is that what you're saying?
Trips, trips. Okay, but then it says in and out, so yeah.
So maybe that number needs to be further clarified in the E I, uh, E A F.
Okay.
On truck trips, round trip, and number of trucks.
Yes. That's not clear.
Four twenty-five here.
Four twenty-four.
Okay, um, a couple, my other questions were asked, other ones, of course, version, um, uh, are there outdoor loading docks?
Uh, yeah, outdoor loading docks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the loading is here. Thirty-three, thirty-three, all day.
Right, I, I in doubt listed as a variant. Right, I, I had that listed as a variance.
Right, okay. Um, and is there gonna be signage?
Um, I don't, I don't believe that at this time, uh, I saw somebody in architecture, but I believe it has a builder in here and it has been agreed. That would be, you know, a separate application. Um, we don't know, we don't know the tenant, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna commit, we wanna, like, go through the effort of getting that all through to them. Right now, there's still a lot of order, signs are.
Okay, I'll add a question to the answer right now.
Okay, great.
Stand up. No, no, right there, right? Oh. I wanna hold it. Oh, that was out real bad.
What, this?
Yeah. That's right. It's easier this way. Okay. Uh, the warehouse, did you come over the, uh, new address, did they deny Al Foxi Way or still the?
I don't have, I don't have an address at the moment, but I'm glad you're in, we're changing the project name of the project.
Right, yes.
The project Foxi because FedEx has the same address.
So it's gonna be in there eight oh nine, I think.
We have to coordinate that with the, I don't want to.
Right, I, I thought it was project Al Foxi, right?
Yeah, project Al Foxi. Okay, I want two questions on the, uh, home climate assessment form, page three eleven twenty four. There's some differences in one, five, thirty one, and twenty two. Uh, those renderings of buildings that you showed us, were they done, uh, before March of this year, or they go back to the previous year?
Let me double check that, they don't have.
Yeah, the, uh, the renderings.
These are dated August thirty first.
Now, the pictures themselves, the, the renderings of the building, the pictures of the building.
Color?
The color, yeah.
It's all, it's all one package.
No.
Exactly, but the color rendering that we showed last, that's not specific.
The, uh, pictures of the building, what's it gonna look like?
Uh, he's talking about the architectural renderings.
Okay, architectural.
That's all, that's all dated August thirty first, twenty twenty three.
August twenty first, yeah.
Okay, thirty twenty three.
Okay, so it's, it's prior to the current day.
Not this.
No, 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 it's current, it's, okay, prior to. Alright, uh, you still don't know the tenant, the owner, correct?
Correct.
What are they gonna use it for?
Correct.
Because you decreased the size of the building by ten thousand, hundred, hundred and twenty square feet, is there any reason for the increase, or?
The office space increased, I think it was written four thousand?
Yeah, no, it's, the original office space was, was seventy nine twenty and it's now gone down to sixty eight eighty. According to Narra Group's rest, E A F, unless that's changed too.
Was written by Narra the four thousand.
And which Narra group is that?
Yeah, no, this is one that you earlier from last year.
Okay, it was the last one, the, uh, March eleventh twenty four on the Narra group description has it at seventy nine twenty, uh, sixty eight eighty. Which is slightly different, a thousand square feet with the building in total. That's why I wanna know if you had a new, uh, tenant, do you know who the tenant is, so just increasing it, alright.
Well, you raise a good point, we plan to submit all updated E A F, all cleaned up, which is for the next edition.
Now, the total, the total acreage increase from eighteen point four nine acres to eighteen point five, is the eighteen point five the correct number?
I believe so, there was a lot line, uh.
Oh, okay, was it?
Issue that was corrected.
Alright, so this is the correct number then?
Yeah, the more current one is correct.
Alright, now, the new building, okay, it's thirty six feet high, according to the, the F, the E, the F E A F, it's forty nine point five feet parapet, this day it's fifty point seven four feet, and you get that corrected, oh, which is the correct number now?
I think fifty point seven four comes to the metric by what you measure.
Yeah, so all, all's correct, the wall, wall.
We'll make sure it's the correct.
And what is that be the correct number?
Fifty point seven four is the dimension by which your town, uh, calculates the, the height measure.
That's the one you're gonna be using now?
Yeah.
So, and that should be clearly shown on the architectural elevations?
Absolutely is, yep, yep, that's on there.
Okay, and correct the F E A F?
Yeah, you will, yep.
Okay. Now, um, page five, D two B two, the intent for the recent place filled in the wetlands area hovering thirty five hundred square feet or point oh eight acres. How much fill is gonna be brought in, what's the increase in the height of the area? You're bringing fill in, you're raising the area up, and how does it improve the site? Because that's what it says on the reason for the fills, to improve the site, you know, what it's all about.
I'll have an answer to that. I know, I know the threshold is, I know we're, we're, we'd like to stay below the optimum acre threshold.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's only in the wetland, we're going in place of water, okay, it's on page five, P two B two. Okay, um, alright, pages six and seven, the P two F, J and G, load and air emissions, uh, state these ninety one round trip, uh, truck trips per day, semi-trails. And how many pieces of vehicles and other types of delivery vehicles coming in and out during the twenty four hour period? Do you have any numbers on those?
Yeah, the passenger, the passenger vehicles, there's three shifts of forty five employees.
Are they clearing, I mean, call it for the five weeks term, or?
There's usually, there's typically a little overlap, um, the parking lot can accommodate ninety vehicles, so that's a good conservative, so.
As you say, ninety hundred thirty five minutes a day?
Yeah, if you're sure, can you clarify that?
Okay.
Or, it's, uh, truck trips per day, that's all I just.
Right, what other types of, people, delivery vans, can we be in vans, or smaller trucks, or?
You want to be a box trucks?
I don't.
Box trucks.
Uh, all, all the loading bases are, are true, full, full size, so we don't have any, um, you know, the, the smaller loading docks. Can I say an Amazon truck might not come a few times?
I don't know.
Probably, probably, probably just.
Because then it seems like you're just putting trucks in, unloading everything, putting back other trucks, trucks, a lot. That's the purpose of this, sorry. The diesel trucks produce carbon dioxide, hydrocarbons, nitrogen oxides, uh, diesel exhausts carbon dioxide, it's causing for eutrophobic gases, cause inject to humans. Now, um, we, in, in the E A F, um, I am G three, uh, we answered no, but what is the total carbon footprint? When they're entering out through the Al Foxi Way, the site, the idling, does it fit into those, uh, because there's no measurement script on how much, uh, carbon is being produced?
No, I do have an air quality statement that was prepared.
Yeah, but it's, uh, we've asked this, we've, we've asked this in prior warehouses coming in.
Carbon footprint?
Uh, or how much, how much is being produced? And yeah, truck is kind of, comes into a really lot, so four Al Foxi Way, only an Al Foxi Way, only a big drive away. Backing into the bay, idling, and supposedly turning the truck off, they're pulling back out, going back out onto the main road. And that would be number of trucks per day, three hundred and sixty five days per year, or does the time inch come in? So that should be the air quality, and it should be calculated. And the hours of operation, um, we don't have a, you, according to the A K R rep, page five states the app, there has updated trip generation to L U C one fifty six. It's an IQ plus of warehouse, okay? I wanna know, what, what business is going to operate the twenty four seven a day?
I mean, we don't, we don't have the tenant yet, but when we have, when we have, when we have the spec, the spec approval for the hours of operation and the height.
They, they should be, they should apply with their town code, and then you'd come back for, uh, the zoning work here twenty four seven.
It, it limits, it limits the.
Like you lose the tenants.
You lose, you lose the, a huge pool of tenant population possibilities.
Doesn't save the, but it's a little warehouse, I guess, but that's just my opinion.
They'll be, they'll be determined if we, we don't, we still don't know FedEx, we're gonna find out about FedEx, but our assumption is that that's a twenty four hour facility on the state road, so that hopefully.
Okay, K R K M will review, um, June seventh twenty four, page five one twenty, all trucks will be routed to and from I two eighty seven and I eighty seven. I, it's a plan that's going to, uh, ensure that no truck traffic will cease out in the exit right to Al Foxi Way. Do you wanna say no cars can go?
I'm gonna say, say it, I'm sorry.
How are you gonna, how are you going to enforce that? That all trucks are gonna go back north?
I mean, it'll, that'll be part of, that'll be part of the directive to the tenant, um, as far as, you mean, like signage, or?
Well, then you would, if, if, that's the problem though, is, uh, you say everything's gonna go back that way by signage, people would get, and it's gonna say, truck, the trailer, trucks only, they're going to the two.
Does our, does our reports say restricted, or is that, they're, they're, since they're most likely coming from that direction or returning?
Well, it's, it will ensure that no truck traffic, see, it says, uh, all trucks will be routed to and from I two eighty seven, I eighty seven. I see how that's a practical, uh, statement, or, or guaranteed it could be not.
Yeah, we'll check that for them.
Because if it goes south, you know, it, it's gonna be a tremendous amount of truck traffic.
So we specifically requested four trucks to be routed directly to and from eighty seven to eighty seven. And the reasoning behind that was because if you go south, there aren't a lot of roads besides, you're just going to New Jersey.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and if you can't get on the Palisades Parkway with a truck, that's not allowed.
Right.
Um, so enforcement, it sounds like your concerns are how to enforce, and I, 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 there's potential signage options that would say trucks left currently.
Yeah, that's probably what happened, that's probably the issue, so.
Because you also, so.
Is there, is there currently restrictions for that?
I don't think there are restrictions, it, that net section.
That's why you put the light, you didn't want it.
Yeah.
I should say.
Actually, so, okay, I think there's small delivery trucks, I think, in moving away.
That actually.
Right, right, sorry, you just, like, but, you know, we, 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 this thing's saying, we're, we're concerned, it's just trucks. If there are, if you're going south, there's no places.
Understood, FedEx doesn't have a truck.
Should they have?
Should they have?
That was my question, is, is, I wonder if there's any signage out there.
Okay, now, uh, page ten, A K R F's, uh, review, no, sorry, just going back to the, uh, the F E A F, page ten, uh, E one H three and E one G discuss this has superior on site. Now, A K R F's review on six seven twenty four, page six and seven, uh, see, environmental sites assessments, plus by twenty sixteen, so it's indicated has carryout, or mediation was conducted. But it never really states, you can't find what the final results were of that, uh, thing, that testing.
We don't have a shipo letter, it wasn't that.
This wasn't, this is not about the shipo letter, this is about the E, E, uh, environmental site assessment, the phase one and phase two.
Alright.
And say, say, say it again.
The phase one, phase two, the environmental site assessment, is called for that, to leave your clarification, should I rewrite on the, on your comments?
Yes, so, uh, none of the comments for the environmental site assessment were addressed.
Okay.
So we were just looking for responses to that. Uh, our comments are really about adding additional measures to ensure that proper procedures are followed, uh, there are protections for stormwater and potentially contaminated soil to our staff. Nothing really stood out, uh, except that a previous phase two was conducted, but, uh, we were not provided with the report, and I don't believe it was submitted, so we'd like to see that submitted.
So no concerns particularly, just.
No, but the, it's funny thing, it's funny thing, salt samples down, or is, uh, the, um, prior, uh, warehouse, uh, had those samples, was it the same?
Reperform phase one first, do they?
You did, the, so.
Give it a big for it.
They just haven't, do you have to provide that report?
Um, the, the latest phase one and phase two were provided, we reviewed them, a previous phase two was conducted, and the most recent phase two referred to that phase two, so we would like that one to be provided, so we can review it.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, because, uh, in my opinion, salt samples should be obtained in any of the services, of those, there's also two separate carrying sites. There's two septic, uh, systems, the waste disposal, where Mark Cloty, nothing said what happened with those. Uh, and I'd like to see a map that shows exactly where the, uh, s, s, the soil, the contaminated soil was placed on, on the site. And I think there's a couple of those, plus where the septic's for. Uh, I think that would explain the idea, you know, uh, because the, you know, the, there are ploughs, but land is there. So I think we need a soil management plan, and this would ask a lot of ones, what you knew. It's been, it's developed, uh, from, I don't know, from the silent and wetlands, as well as the last three stream, which you're diverting. Okay, uh, and it runs into the rappel out of the Patricic River Basin, okay? Rockland County planning, take a look at their level from five three twenty four, five three eight, a couple of others, talk about that. Further, uh, okay, or A K R F indicates a vapor barrier, you know, uh, design should be added as a precautionary measure to mitigate potentially a vapor. So that's on page seven, I think, something that's gotta be looked at. Because we don't know exactly what the company, what the contaminants were, they said, when you read the letter, it's below, but the standings are. But if this is gonna run off into the creeks and the floodlands, now you're, you're, uh, spreading contamination, that's, it's been my concern. Uh, last, last couple of things, uh, D D M D comments, six eleven twenty four is numerous, and they need answers, especially regarding perk and the other tests. If anybody's failed, a new plan will be required for drainage and site, so, uh, the, uh, the big, which you have to is get these tested, because if anyone fails, the building's, uh, design may not be changed, which is happening already.
To the, the stormwater testing?
Yeah, for the perk testing, and the.
So, so we performed perk testing, I think, when it was done, it was supposed to.
That's right, Bruce has not notified.
We did have a little testing.
Plus, he said some of the testing did not include the decks in the ponds that were required of perk regulations, it's like six pages. Yeah, that's. Yeah, somebody has to be there. But despite you read through all of Bruce's comments, and talks about, uh, testing the ponds, talks about perk testing, uh, but, uh, in, in one for it to be, uh, as I said, a couple of places have to change their plans, if one of those perk tests, one of the others fail, we have to redo the whole bill, so, and that's have to be ready.
And the window, in order to do those tests, is closing quickly?
Yeah, that we done the spring up.
Yeah, Bruce indicated another week or two.
Right, that we did those done, we need to pull them up, let somebody there find out exactly this test, how we done, otherwise we're waiting for the summer for those tests. Um, okay, just a clarification, I, the site plan is two different soil types, B and D, what exactly are B and D soils?
Uh, um, the, the different classification of soil.
Yes, it's soil B and soil D. Look at page two, it's the same page, the large map, uh, the page two. On the map, I want, I want a map, have a map.
This is, that back over.
No, I'll just go back. Yeah, D soils, C soils, the, the.
Different, there's different drain classifications.
What's it, it's brush B, brush D?
Yeah.
Brush line?
But, yes, it's, that ties back to the drains.
We need a clarification on that.
More explanation.
Okay, and also, the A K R F says that spectrum report of the investigation twenty ten, we never supplied with it, we haven't seen it. Like, happy, no reports, no reports have referred to the soil, which would definitely petition, we need those sort of reports to determine. And then one last thing, you talk about the Tavis, which you're gonna put into the fire truck there, that, what weight is that like?
Ditch five hundred.
Hold a hundred, what's that, hundred and seven five thousand pounds truck?
It'll hold a fire truck, yeah.
The fire truck is seven five thousand.
Seven five, seventy five thousand, we'll hold that, okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, I can answer this one, then you give us a day. Well, I can, it's, it's, when, uh, then you give those to the agency.
So I, I agree with, uh, what everybody said, what you done, we've brought a lot of points, um, but we've seen a lot of these warehouses come through lately. No tenant, you're speculating, you're trying to get the biggest warehouse you can get through, it makes more like you guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, the problem is these warehouse distribution centers, they have major effect on here, you know, and some of the, and they don't go along with the intent of the three year old land. We should put in place a kind of protect against these large developments, uh, later the D size is five thousand square feet is the intent. The town's company has a plan, it doesn't go like that, they point out major problems with truck traffic in warehouses in the town of Barnstown. So I understand you're trying to get the biggest thing possible, but you gotta realize the effects it has on the town itself. And we've seen a couple of developments out there that are trying to come through too, and we gotta take everything, and what has, everything that affected. And our biggest concern are the environment concerns and traffic concerns, you know, and it, it's already been brought up, uh, so I won't repeat that, but you're, you're, you're filling the wetlands, you're approaching on wetlands. Uh, you're diverting a stream, uh, it might be a reason why this property hasn't developed, you know, it seems like it's a tough property, with all these things involving it. You know, the good use of the driveway, I guess, back in the day, but to build something on it, it looks like it's gonna be a lot of problems, especially something as big. Um, and you, you, the traffic study, you're, you admit substantial increase in traffic, we got a letter from the town in Charlotte by saying, um. It's gonna pose a significant negative impact to Clarkstown with respect to traffic, so you can see traffic isn't, isn't a main concern, especially when you.
I just, the only thing about that letter is, is absolutely zero comparative data whatsoever to support that, and I'm before that board all the time. All the casting characters there is zero comparative data to support that comment, so.
You don't think they're, they're concerned about ninety one trucks coming in now?
I don't, but, I don't, I don't, but, but if you're gonna make a statement like that, have data to back it up, that's all, that's my concern with that letter.
My statement was they provided us with a memo.
Their state, their state.
That's my statement.
Their state, that's their.
My statement is about their statement.
And I'm not gonna make a statement, that their statement is not what the paper's written on, but that's all.
Well, all right, well, the traffic study shows there's gonna be substantial increase in traffic, right, we can't all do that. It's in again, uh, ninety one trucks, twenty four seven, it's just, it's just so much going on here, add into whatever's already in place. Um, I, I see you updated traffic study, you started doing the traffic study with land use one thirty, which we've never, I haven't seen that in a while. Uh, and you revised it, and you're using land use code one fifty six, which is more comfortable to watch, because it's a bigger I Q distribution, right? All right, so you, I'm glad you changed that, because it shows you that there are more truck traffic and car traffic than usually the one thirty code, that was too low. You know, but I'm glad you changed that, because it, it shows the increase in traffic that's gonna happen with this development. Uh, so those are my, my main concerns, as usual, environment, traffic, um, I won't go into the comments, but you'll see by the time consulting comments, that there's a lot of issues with this site plan. Uh, one thing that, uh, I'll point out is, uh, Bruce Peters, uh, in October twenty third, his letter has twenty five comments, and now his current one has thirty four comments, so things aren't getting better, according to Bruce Peters.
I've seen that trend, okay.
Yeah, it's getting, he's got more comments, a lot of problems with the, uh, the perk test, uh, the, the water course diversion piping is unacceptable. So throughout his letter, you'll see, he doesn't like what you guys have right now, you know, and that, that's a main concern, I, I like to highlight unacceptable, you know, cannot do this. So there's a lot in here that says, this plan is no good right now, you know, that we have tonight, so hopefully you guys can change it up, meet some of the comments.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see when you come back, uh, and a lot of these problems could be solved by lowering the footprint of this, you know, less impact on environment, less impact on, on traffic study. I think that fifty foot wall right near the property, that, that's, that's massive, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable with putting something that big, even if, I know you're going for variance, but. We have to say here what affects the neighbors in our town, you know, so th- this is a huge development, I think if you made it smaller, it might solve some of your issues. When, when you think about all comments and the comments, the town, it's always, so, that's all I got, and I.
Thank you very much.
Please. I agree with everything that has been said so far, just, when you, when you showed the view from three oh three before.
Yeah.
Can you show that again?
Uh, sure. One second.
Scale wise, it looks like almost like maybe twenty five, thirty feet, kind of, kind of.
Right, it was really hard, like, my comment is basically like.
Now, the one thing to point out that's not shown on here is that all of it, all of this is gonna be added, right? So you'll now have a, a buffer view of this from three oh three.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is done, this is done in August of twenty twenty three, and what we're, what we're showing is that we're gonna come back with all this dense vegetation, that'll significantly.
So we'll at least landscape there and break down.
Well, we'll both be on, okay, so, so just, just, or you can be, if you can go to the plan again, just tell me where your picture is from, okay?
Right here, right at the, right at the intersection of three oh three and F O X.
So, so from here, it's honestly really hard, I mean, like, after that, to see where, where the building is.
Am I right over? Absolutely. That, sometimes they're hard to read, that's why they do the white dashed out one, to kind of make it pop out.
Okay.
But that's the building, that's the actual building at the actual size from that view, um.
Is it, so it's like, is the property, I guess you're gonna look at the rating plan, like, it's, the property is, is going down?
Yes, yes, so that's an important thing, that's an important thing to mention, right? Slows down.
It does slow down, so when you're at three oh three, you don't necessarily see a fifty five foot, or you, fifty.
The topo goes, yeah.
Right, so like, when she's saying like the cross section, even like the cross section from here, showing that, that dip in what you're.
Yeah, maybe you wanna cross.
Right, yeah, yeah, so you see like this elevation, that elevation, and, I don't know if it's in there.
Sometimes it do, but usually it's, they'll do this on the side, but I don't, I don't think they do it here, so.
Right, and, and.
That's an important, that's an important point, and it's a, it's a good point, that, the, the scale of it doesn't, doesn't feel necessarily.
Like you're trying to go along.
When you say, when you say fifty feet from the front yard and all that, it, it sounds a certain way, but when you're viewing it from where people are actually gonna view it from. You can see it's, it's, it's quite, it's, it's more modest than that.
Right, the topo is not gonna, given the way the topo is, it goes down, it's not gonna, you're not gonna have like this fifty foot passing in front of you, it's actually gonna be down, so that's, that's gonna help significantly. And we're gonna do, like Jane suggests, we're gonna do the cross section, so you can see that as well, and we, when we do the next, our potential is, right? Correct.
Yeah, that, that was all I had, that was different, I don't know what's said.
Said, Bruce, anything?
I just think this is the best warehouse project I've seen out of the last, uh, couple of quarters.
Like, if you said a little left.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, this is the best warehouse project I've seen, you know, why?
Did you tell our client?
It's like, it's like.
Thank you, sir. This ideal spot, they, if you go out to the blue way, and I don't know if it's easy access, if FedEx is back there, I mean, for me, I don't think I have a lot of issue. As long as, you know, you know, obviously there's certain budgets that we're gonna have to meet, uh, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna submit a new plan.
Yeah, we have homework to do, no question about it.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the comment, because I think we agree, cause given that FedEx is there now, I do believe they're operating twenty four seven, but I'll confirm with that.
You, you don't even know that they're.
Yeah.
You really don't, I'm at three oh three pretty much every day.
Just, just.
Numerous, numerous times, I, you know.
Good.
I have a motion open up to the public.
Could I just, I just want, I just want.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
And you made the building forty feet, would you save a lot of money on those trees, cause you won't be able to see the double ball?
The trees, I have to put the trees in.
Yeah, no.
It's part of the three oh three all in, right?
All right, and this, one of the things you're gonna have to change your plan, Bruce, uh, he thinks his number two, talks about what the, um, water course diversion, the piping there.
He didn't like, he didn't like, he didn't like the connection, and I'll, I'll change that.
And the angles, he's worried about the angles, blockage, there's nobody getting in yet, it's made it out.
Yeah, so, I, I, and I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna change that.
Yeah.
So what he's talking about is where, he's not talking about the, the entire lot of pipe?
No, sorry, I, yeah.
He's referring to where, it's kind of hard to see here, but, it's first picked up, they, they have it going to two, um, thirty six inch, or pipes. So that's gonna be, and we're gonna, we're gonna fix that, that's gonna, that's gonna turn into a large box, so that's accessible.
So it's your angles next to you.
These, those should.
Broken ones, which is a big problem, the top one.
The angles, the angle should, that should really affect the, 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 the drain, the drain, the water's gonna drain through.
Has his comments and, uh.
It doesn't, it doesn't know, it's gonna.
Gotta look at the, the comments, gotta change.
I, I agree, but I, I do believe that he's focused on this, and I, I would agree with that, but that's gonna, that's gonna change the.
Board makes the terms, are they just gonna be terms, or are they gonna be manholes?
Oversized manholes.
So they can get in and clean my.
Yeah, they have to be large to, to fit the forty inch pipe, if they want to be standard, it'd be oversized.
Anybody else on the board? Would open up the public?
I should open up the public.
Should, no, I accept, if you're in your's all favorite, I, any opposed, huh? Could open up the public for the site plan?
That's you, the public.
As you can see, this board has a lot of concerns, so do we favor, don't leak our concerns, if you have additional, of course, station name and everything is correct, but if you have additional concern, please. Cause we know that the town has issues, and we have issues, and we know there are issues.
I'll be brief.
Thank you very much.
Vanessa Lappin, six fifty nine Western Highway, Woldell, New York. With regards to the waterway, this is a living part of the ecosystem, and to treat it as an inconvenience to be shunted into a pipe, rather than considering the connection from the park to the watershed. And the negative impact on wildlife is unfortunate. The Sparkle Creek Watershed Alliance continues to raise the issue of velocity and the decrease in pervious surface area, and the intentional increase in velocity of the water coming out of that pipe will impact, impact the wetlands. This requires a positive declaration for SECR. The overlay explicitly sets a limit at sixty five thousand square feet, and this project is contrary to the law. The owner understands the constraints of the property and should propose a project that fits the law. To continue to build without solar is a bill that will be paid when we run out of electricity to run our homes and businesses, as the data centers on electric vehicles and appliance demand continues to grow. The lack of clarity on FedEx, U P S, Amazon hours and traffic, plus the volume from Linden Choice, W P T, and South Green Bush needs to be remediated. And the board should recommend that they remodel the existing building and move on, thank you.
Thank you very, very much, okay, anybody else in the public? We hear none, all votes opposed, second, Mr. Andrew's all favorite, I, any opposed, none? What you want, cut off, right?
Me do.
Nope, nobody on that.
You gonna ask for a continuation?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir. Good luck, I mean, you can see, we, we have stats taken, that, that, that being.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll answer, like I said, the, the, the goal is to get back, I know college isn't worth to do, so, you know, what we saw as part of the rendering, we're gonna get that to you and support that pretty picture, and we'll come back for the next.
Well, you can see the board, the new revenue, the board has questions and comments, and things, so, I can put a good direction to go.
No, I appreciate it, and these are all good comments, so thank you, Dan, and we'll, uh, take that and get to work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I'm ready, I will, actually, sorry, they're texting, I think it's almost done, so. Yeah, it's still there, though.
Okay.
He'd have a hard stop with a little, a little, a little reverb. Thank you. Got it all?
Thank you very much.
Help you, but, you know.
That's really, we've got to start with our pictures, stop, people, I don't want you to start. All right, all the business. Your girl's leaving? They all wake up now. All right, please, thank you so much, you guys are good, I'd like you coming here.
We like being here. Thanks for having us. Do you want us to stay for the next part, or?
Uh, are they involved in this part, the, uh, other comments?
No.
Yeah, the local law, I don't think so.
No. No, you have to, thank you.
It's great seeing you all.
Oh, somebody, you can, those, those, on the, next phase, on those, and all that, but, he's saying some of the happy people.
Yeah, I think they'll, they'll send them to the town first, and they'll, they'll send up to us.
Oh, okay, all right, I'd like to see any of those.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have our stuff for a few, I think.
Oh, okay, over here, W P T, he's like, Dave, was he American, yes, for him, like, uh. Okay, 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 stay calm.
Okay, any discussion on post local law amendment, chapter forty three, has two point two, it adjusts zoning difference, um, parcel though, and has two eighty three, what's, early town road?
What is happening is that spot, let's see, uh, under two, slide five.
Put some math in there?
Yeah, you can't see that from the map, but it is.
Right, so.
Couldn't worry about that.
No, no, multi-family, the scene of the map, and it shows it's a site. Okay, again, this is for the.
You can see that the town board.
So where, just referring it to them.
It's theirs, and they're asking.
Right, they just.
Just asking for lead agency.
Yeah, they're gonna be, so, we're just gonna refer to them.
Right.
Any question on this?
Your lead agency has a question.
So can I have a motion that we refer this, uh, or, or local law to the town board?
Well, we're not referring it, you're, uh.
We're just rec.
Recognizing that they're lead agency.
Okay, we have no comments on it.
Right, you'll just sign the lead agency part.
Okay. Could I vote on that?
You should vote.
Okay. Can I have a vote on it, all favor, see, I.
I'll make a motion for you to vote on him, but.
Town board to be lead agency. The motion is.
You don't have, you're not, the town board is gonna be lead.
The town board.
No objection from town, what's having lead agency, make the motion, okay. Make the motion, all favor, of any, second, all favor, I, any opposed, none, yes.
Okay, Ms. Nellis, motion?
Yes.
And you second. Okay, here my standing. Okay, the first one is what, no, both the same.
No, they're two different.
They're two lots, they're two hundred acres of lots.
Yeah, a different number, one is seven sixty six, round nine W, but it says P dash five seven M, and then the other one's the same thing, but it says P dash five seven L.
Right, there's a few different section block of lots.
Okay.
One is fourteen point one, and the other is fourteen point two, and it is to construct a single family home in the R twenty district.
The motion being such a.
Some variances for existing, not performing lot with, um, building height, floor area ratio.
The motion would be if you, uh, give the, the local determination. In the second, second, who's.
For that favor, I, any opposed, none?
That's, on both of those, right?
Yeah. You have that changed?
Yep. And, uh, the town of Clarkstown, they are adding agri floors into their food.
You know, they're gonna be, wanna say things, the cyclical things.
Right, but it's on sites of ten acres or more.
Yep, yeah. Any discussion?
Motion.
Motion. So I have a motion to, uh, to refer to that?
Local, termination.
The local termination? A second, okay, all favor, I, you're both, none?
First one and, uh, correct.
Construct stairs and a deck on the site of an existing single family residence. Another grant in the grand deals?
Oh, you're on the grand one, okay. Uh, yeah, sixty two River Road.
Yeah.
Construct stairs and a deck on the site of an existing single family residence.
Local termination?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, motion for local termination?
Motion.
The second, sorry, all favor, I, have any opposed, none? Veterinary office, is it allowed by usage, or code?
Local law to amend the zoning code in order to divi- define veterinary offices and allow them as a permitted use in certain districts.
They come under medical, no, whatever medical is?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with NIAC's code.
Or agriculture? Should we subject, uh, uh. Should be subject, uh, uh, determination.
Local determination. They're just amending their code to permit it by right in certain districts.
I'll make the motion, go a second, I'm just before I all favor, I, I vote none, that's one, last one.
Lot changes and lot mergers. Uh, local law to amend zoning code in order to allow lot line changes and lot mergers of adjacent parcels to be processed by the building department without the need for planning board approval, where they're not requesting site development.
I don't know.
That's administrative, a lot of me in this college do it that way. So, you can.
Because my, this is NIACS, we have nothing to do with it, they're just notifying us that they're doing something. They don't expect anything from us, so we don't have to do anything.
Don't have to.
They're just.
They're giving you the opportunity to, if you want to comment, much like, um, our projects go to Clarkstown and they'll come back with that letter. If you wanted to comment, you could, but first is, just.
Motion subject to local determination, okay. All right, and second, Ms. McCrory, all favor, I, any opposed, none.
Wait, so it's Man Del and McRory?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I just was agreeing. So, yes, you still have to do the minutes, in particular, uh, the revised May eighth conditions of the, uh, na- the declaration from, the negative declaration for WPT, um, that was circulated, the email. I have one comment, as I was proofreading the, you don't know, did the board intend that the crash analysis memo was not included in this submission and will be required prior consideration of site plan approval or preliminary site plan approval?
Those preliminary.
That's what I thought, so I think that's the, we just have to add preliminary, everything else looks good to you guys, then.
Yep.
Uh, so, you, I would vote to accept, I would vote to accept this correct, accept these minutes as, as amended here.
Yep.
And then they will be circulated.
Right, corrected and amended.
Yeah, they will be circulated accordingly, so.
It was second.
Wait, who did the first?
The stages.
Okay.
Second was mine.
All favor?
All favor, opposed, none?
Okay.
That's one.
That's it, that's all there is.
You have any other minutes?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, eight, twenty second.
The May twenty second meeting, you have minutes that were circulated?
We had, no, we're voting, we're just voting on what.
Does the, 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 the regime?
That was the only thing that was on.
Yeah.
Well, we have the pause deck and the, uh, two ninety day extensions.
Yep.
Motion, you said the minutes of May twenty second? Second, all favor?
All right.
Any opposed, none?
Vote for the chair.
Vote for the chair, second, all favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I got you.